Good evening. As a preliminary matter, this is John Regan, Chair of the Auburn Planning Board. Permit me to confirm that all members are present. Members, when I call your name, please respond to the affirmative.
Aye.
I'm Rokesh Nalan.
Present.
Sierra Smara is on vacation. Town officials and employees participating, when I call your name, please respond to the affirmative. Town Planner, Adam Menard.
Here.
Staff Assistant Danielle Chamberlain Roberts.
Here.
Good evening. This is the open meeting of the Town Auburn Planning Board of Tuesday, May 23rd, 2023, now called to order at 7:00 PM. This meeting is being conducted as a hybrid format under Chapter 22 of the Acts of 2022. For this meeting, the Planning Board is convening in person and by remote access. Remote access information is posted on the town's website identifying how the public may join. Please note that this meeting is being recorded by the Auburn applicants only. Is there anyone here in the audience tonight that is recording tonight's meeting? I mean, according to those members of the Planning Board, employees, and members of the public who participate remotely, please be aware that other folks may be able to see you, and please take care not to screen share your computer. Anything broadcast may be captured by the recording. Please rise and join us and lift up the flag.
We pledge allegiance to the flag, the United States of America, and to the republic which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All supporting materials that have been provided to the members of this body are available on the town's website. I would like to remind the audience, applicants, town administration, and each of the Planning Board members to please refrain from asking questions in regards to all matters discussed this evening without first being granted my consent. Finally, each vote taken in this meeting will be conducted by a roll call vote. Before we get into the meeting, I'd just like to thank Todd Karain for his service on the Planning Board. It was good to have him. Sorry to lose him, but now he's a town selectman, so good luck, Todd. 7:00 PM, applicant Maria Victoria Landano requesting site plan approval under 3.2.3.1 of the Auburn zoning bylaw for a home and daycare at 8 Leslie Ave, Auburn, Mass., 01501, MAP 7, Parcel 82. Is there anyone here representing? May I have a motion to open the hearing?
I'll make a motion.
May I have a second?
I'll second it.
All those in favor, Rokesh?
Aye.
Aye.
So, the hearing's now over. Go ahead and make your presentation. Introduce yourself or your name and address.
So, my name is Isabella. She's Maria. She doesn't speak English. So, I'm trying to help her. I can understand English and touch like a little bit, but if they're missing.
Okay. So, you're asking, who's the applicant? You or her?
Her.
Okay. So, she's asking to do a daycare at 8 Leslie Ave, right up at Packard Yacht Hill, right? Isn't that where Leslie Ave is?
Yes. You doing Packard Yacht and Upland?
Yep. It says in your application that you have license for 10 children. So, our questions are going to be, what time do you start? What time do you finish the daycare every day?
Six in the morning.
Six in the morning or six at night? Okay, so with 10 students or children, there's going to be 10 cars. There isn't room on that street for 10 cars if they all show up at once. It's an arrow road, but there's a long driveway going into the property if I'm not mistaken. So, I would suggest that a couple go in, drop off the kids back out, leave, and then the next couple go in. That way you're not blocking the neighbor's driveway. Know what I mean?
Adam, it's Leslie. But you know, it's a cross-street that go between Upland and...
It's just a lot. Hello.
Yeah, I was going to pull it up on the computer.
I'm led you to cross. No, it isn't a cross-street. It's a road through.
Can you bring that up on the big computer? There you go. You got it up now. So, can you pull that up?
So, to run all those.
Okay. Let me scroll over to the map for a second.
Sorry?
Adam, it's 8 Leslie, right?
I think my only concern is parking, you know, letting students, dropping them off, and then picking them up. I mean, it's a pretty congested neighborhood. There's a lot of houses on Leslie Ave.
How many, John, I can ask, how many cars can fit in the garage?
You mean in the driveway?
The driveway, sorry, yeah.
I would say... I'd say six, end to end.
But then it'll stay in.
How many cars could fit in that driveway end to end to end? Four? Six?
Yeah.
Okay, good guess. Does anybody in the audience have any questions regarding this? Please step to the microphone, right over there by that microphone, and say your name and address, please.
My name's Bob Urban. I live at 12 Leslie Ave. And I'm from 41 Federal Hill Road, but I've recently moved. My father had passed away, and my mom's 94. So, I'm just wondering what you guys, you know, have lined up in regards to, you know, you said 6:00 AM, your children. What time are they going to be going outside? And how many will there be? That's, I'm just curious as to your setup.
She have seven children and time.
Different hours of being outside? And could it be as early as 7:00, 8:00 o'clock?
Like 11:00.
11:00, okay. All right. Now, there's also dogs in the neighborhood. I know there's some right above you. And at night, my dog has the little conversation with them. I mean, just, you know, they say goodnight to each other, but the two up there are quite loud, and I don't know if they're approachable. I'm just letting you, you know that?
Yeah.
And whenever there is somebody outside, the dogs seem to go crazy, so I don't know, you know, we'll have to talk. You know, somebody would have to talk to the neighbor up there or just see how they act to begin with. But my concern is, once one dog starts, the whole neighborhood goes up, so.
Is the yard fenced in?
Yes, their yard is fenced in, yeah. And I noticed you have a cage out there. Is that for your own animals? Do you have a dog yourself, and that cage out there is for your dogs to protect the children? Okay, all right. So, my concern is just in the mornings with, you know, like you said, dropping the, you know, cars pulling up, dropping them off, and then the children being outside. I mean, children play, they make a noise, but as long as it wasn't going to be before, you know, 9:00 o'clock. That's, that was my main concern. Other than that, I have no other objections.
Thank you.
Okay.
How many children do you have signed up for the daycare now?
Seven.
Seven?
Yeah.
Would you have the ability to go to town?
Yeah.
You have no license. Anybody else in the audience have any questions? Anybody on the board, Rokesh?
I have a few questions, John. One is, so the 6:00 AM to 6:00 PM, this is about the, Maria has the time, is that... So, how does that differ from the question that Bob raised? So, is it, what is the 11:00 AM time? So, there was some mention about 11:00 AM?
She work 10 hours. Daycare is open like 6 to 6, but she work like 6 to 4:30.
Okay, okay.
With a license from 6 to 6?
Yeah.
Okay.
Well, she mentioned, I think she mentioned that kids don't go outside until 7:00, so 11:00 o'clock. That's what I was...
Then, this, this might not fall under ours, but would the state... Because the state gives you the license, would the state have requirements to be maintained inside the house for the daycare facility?
They have the license.
Okay. And then, third question was on the food permit. So, is there any food being prepared on site?
Here.
Is there any food? Mm-hmm, prepared on the site?
Yeah, everything, everything.
Then would that... So, based on the Board of Health, the Board looks like they need a food permit, right? So, if the daycare provider prepares food on site, they will need a food permit from the Board of Health?
She have an...
She what?
She have the permit.
So, she did obtain permit already from the Board of Health?
Doctor permit or license from the state. Need a permit or license from the town for food preparation, from the town of Auburn.
She have it, but not right now.
Not with it, but she has it.
Yeah.
Okay, yeah.
It's, when people, when people come and they drop off, the people that you're taking care of, they just drop them off and then they leave. The cars don't stay there for any length of time.
Just drop the... Just drop the children.
Come back and pick them up at some time. Are the terms that they drop off and pick them up staggered, I mean, are they all at the same time? Are they all coming at 7:00 o'clock or...
Not at...
Some at 8, some at 9?
Some at 8, um, 9, yeah.
Fifteen minutes.
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
I think as long as, you know, to run a point, they could space up the drop-off and the pickup. I think that helps the neighborhood. And then we'll just confirm if the food permit is there, as long as that's there.
So, we'd like a motion to approve with the conditions that no children outside before 9:00 and the drops-offs are staggered. And that she, if the town has a record of her food preparation for, during, or to help.
Yes.
May I have a motion?
I'll make that motion.
May I have a second?
I'll second it.
All those in favor, Rokesh?
Aye.
Aye.
I shall join with aye as a vote.
You should close the hearing, too.
Oh, yeah. We should have a vote.
I'll play vote.
I'm going to make a motion to vote the public here.
May I have a second?
I'll second it.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Right, so, and it's three ayes for the vote. Correctors change their mind in the last two seconds. So, it's approved. It's approved. It's based on no children outside before 9:00 AM, staggered drop-offs and pickups. And Adam's going to check it and warn it out, make sure you have the food preparation plan.
Thanks.
Good luck.
Good luck.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Second on the agenda tonight at 7:05 PM is applicant Cabrillian Family LLC requesting a special permit under Section 3.2.2.4 for two-bedroom apartment in an existing mixed-use structure at 744 South Bridge Street, Auburn, Mass., 01501, MAP 60, Parcel 50. Is there anyone here representing Cabrillian? Please step up to the mic, but I have to tell you, we can't vote on this tonight because we don't have four. Is this where the Biscotti place was?
Yes.
That's what I thought.
Yes.
Did they move or did he go out of business?
They just went out of business.
Really? Oh, that's too bad.
What was it?
Biscotti. It was a bakery, bakery coffee shop.
They're going out of that house now.
Yeah, they're getting home now.
Oh, really? Oh, okay. So, basically, you're just going to demo the inside of what was the coffee shop and reconfigure the interior, nothing on the outside.
No, the outside felt done.
Right, and then...
Just going back to what it was.
Right.
High residential anyways. We're just reversing it back to what it was.
I really don't have any questions, but like I said, unfortunately, we can't vote on it because it's a special permit. But it was, the demo plan is very well done, and so was the reconfiguration showing it in the second plan. How do I open the hearing with a floor?
Yeah, we can open it here.
Can we open the hearing? Okay.
I'll second it.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Hearing's now over.
They'll, they'll do the present, sorry. So, for a special permit approval, they need four yes votes from this board. There's only three, so they'll give you a presentation. They won't be able to vote an approval on this until the following meeting, when we have four people, two weeks.
John, I have one question maybe for Adam here. Is, so the zone itself, so because it's a mixed use, it's, so it's, it doesn't have to now be changed to residential?
No.
Okay. Okay. And then, one, one comment, I think, from the building commission? Yes, the building commissioner. Exterior plan should have adequate parking. I think those, there's enough parking, yeah.
Yeah, it's going to be less, less an issue now.
Okay.
It's way more. Way more, yeah.
Awesome. I don't have any of the comments.
Do I have any questions?
It was, yeah. It was that plus my office.
Yeah.
Larger apartments, so it was before they built it down. Before I was there, it was an office.
I'm fine.
Okay, so may I have a motion to continue this toward next 12:00 PM?
I'll make a motion that we continue it to the next meeting on June 27th.
June 13th.
June 13th.
June 13th.
So, next meeting.
I'll second it.
All those in favor, Rokesh?
Aye.
I shall join with aye. I'll see you in two weeks.
I have to come back. So, I have to come back, that's...
I don't think you have to come back no more.
Well, maybe I have to.
Make your presentation. We'll have it on the agenda.
They just don't want to have me here and have it.
It's up to you. It's up to you. You can join online, too, instead of coming here if you want. I don't know where you live.
Will I get a, will I get a letter, a time, and everything again, just like this one?
Same time, 7:00 o'clock, June 13th.
Okay.
Thank you.
Oh, one question.
Sure.
After that, will I then apply for the building permits?
Correct.
Thank you.
Can you start that process now?
I don't think, think it will. This is an appeal period on special permits, too, so. It's a multi-step process, special permits.
Next on the agenda is 7:10, applicant Acorn Acres Manufactured Housing Community requesting a special permit under Section 3.6.3.2.6.12 for the Auburn zoning bylaw for an auto repair garage at 113 Washington Street, Auburn, Mass., 01501, MAP 27, Parcel 6. May I have a motion to open the hearing?
I'll make that motion.
May I have a second?
I'll second it.
All those in favor, Rokesh?
Aye.
Aye. Is there anyone here? Nope, there you are. So, give us an idea of what you're doing there. I'm trying to figure where it is on, I couldn't bring it up on Google Maps.
You know, the new Lundgren Collision Center is on Route 2?
Yep.
And so, Acorn Acres, I'm Justin Stalmach, the owner of Acorn Acres. Jared Lyles from Lundgren Collision Center. If you're going towards Worcester, you hit, yeah, you hit Lundgren first, and then Acorn Acres is directly after that. They're budding properties. So, what we're looking to do, three things. First, I'm looking to change the use of a commercial metal building that's within my property. That would allow Jared and his team to be able to lease that property, to be able to do automobile advanced driver's assistance systems, but don't ask me what that is. He can explain it. But the...
It's very difficult.
So, right now, that building is, is owned, or the use is a commercial warehouse. It was previously leased out to a commercial construction company. Prior to that, it was a paving company, so there was a lot of heavy equipment that was stored up there, vehicles in and out all times of day, sometimes on the weekends. What Lundgren's looking to do is this ADAS, where they're going to be having five to 15 vehicles a day at most, one at a time going into the building, do their diagnostics, send it back to their collision center next door. So, there's no, no auto, auto bodywork being done, no mechanical work being done within our building. It's strictly just the computers and recalibrating the sensors.
Yeah, yeah, you plug it into the OBD connector and, you know, use the software, whatever they require, to reset any cameras, modules, sensors, things like that. Yeah.
Shield breaks, whatever.
Yeah, exactly. So, we, we have to have a space of 30 by 50 minimum per ODM standards, so this building fits the bill perfectly.
It's a 40 by 60.
Forty, yeah.
One big open room. So, and then what they're, what we're looking to do, or what Jared and Lundgren are looking to do, is there's a PVC fence that separates our two properties, remove two sections of that fence, put in a similar style of gate, and then create a gravel or fresh stone access driveway from their parking lot to our roadway to be able to access that building. No. Overall, I mean, from my perspective of it as, as the community owner, a lot less impact to our, potential impact to our residents, you know, again, with those heavy equipment vehicles that used to be going in there, they have to come in off of Route 22, so they'd be going through the whole community, where Jared and his team, they're only going to be going by four or five homes when, if they come in, you know, through that access gate.
John, how many, how many vehicles did you say?
Uh, anywhere from five to 15, depending on what needs to be done.
You have a question, Rokesh?
So, so would there be a detailed, I know there is a site plan, but would there be a detailed site plan now? You know, with the existing, you know, use of the site and then the updated?
There, there's nothing that was changing. I was talking to Adam about what's start of the existing conditions. We're not changing anything with our building. The only change would be removal of those two sections of fence, which we indicated where that would be on the plan. Yeah, everything else would stay the same.
And then, so there's the, you know, looking at some of the board reviews, there was, there's no auto repair license required here, right? Not aware of this property?
Yeah, I guess was, yeah, that was kind of a question from the board of selectmen that we weren't sure what the answer would be. On how to, it seems that there's a simple solution to deal with it where one, they have to apply for it, or they don't. Being that our overall zone is a highway business for Acorn Acres, I don't know, I can't answer that question. I guess we'd look from guidance, whether it's from this board or from whoever we need to speak to on that.
My opinion is, yes, it's fixing automobiles.
Okay, okay.
It's not this board's authority. My, my personal opinion is, yes.
Okay. So, is that something that I, as the owner of the building, would go for, or that Lundgren would go for? Okay.
So, I'll get that in motion.
Okay.
And then, looking at the Board of Health, it says the current license is for manufactured housing community?
Yep.
And so, it's essentially residential, not commercial, right? So, would there be a change there?
No, we are zoned as highway business. All of our manufactured housing communities are highway business. So, I mean, it is true, Board of Health does issue that yearly license for us, but that building right now is a commercial warehouse building. It has always been used as a commercial use.
So, would that then go away, the Board of Health's license? I can just, I don't know.
We would continue to operate the community as is with our 37 homes, and then that metal building would be leased to Lundgren for them to be able to use it when they need to.
And then, you did, and since there is no auto repair, right, it's essentially just a recalibration, a yard? I'm assuming there's no oil and water separator? There's no other requirements?
But there is actually in that building. It was rebuilt in, I think, 2016, and that was before we purchased the property. When they rebuilt it, they put in what they call the alternative method, which we have in another building that we own, too. It's a pit in the ground. There's a grate over the top of it. There's a explosion-proof pump inside of it, and then that gets piped out to a tank within the building. So, idea is if there was ever any type of leak within the building, that liquid goes into that pit and then gets pumped into that tank. Yeah, so that probably, that whole system already is in place.
The last question is just, I mean, just the five to 15 vehicles. So, from a traffic perspective, you don't expect any changes, significant changes to the pattern there, right?
No. Due to the extent of the calibrations and how long they take, there's, you can only do so many in a day. That's our answer.
Are you ready?
No.
I don't have a problem with it. I always go by, is that a support application?
Disappointing.
I don't understand why.
Well, if complaints from neighbors with fumes, well, close again, like, well, it's not really a problem.
Fumes for what?
Paint, paint, paint.
That's what the collision center is not for, is it?
I mean, I can't tell you, too, I did, in the packet, provide a letter. I sent the letter out to all our residents, letting them know that we were coming in here and what was, you know, what Lundgren's potential use was going to be, and to call me if they had any questions, and they're usually pretty good with calling if they have questions or concerns. I didn't hear from anybody.
So, this metal building is basically right next door to Lundgren Collision Center?
Correct.
Take down two sections of fence for the driver. Where are the trailers and the relations?
Do we have that site plan? So, this is the collision center, whoever's looking here, right here. Here's Acorn Acres, so right here is where that two sections of fence would go. So, they would be coming in, essentially, right, you'd say, right through here, coming up this roadway, and then coming into the garage right there. So, they're only going by those one, two, three, four homes to be able to access it.
Um, how can we get minutes further down toward the building?
There's a big retaining wall there. So, when Lundgren built the collision center, they had to blast and, because we looked at that, because that would obviously be ideal. But right behind our building, there's going to be a, what, an eight, 10-foot retaining, yeah. Yeah.
Any questions, John? Any questions from the audience? Okay, um, can I have a motion to approve?
It's a special permit.
Is this possible? Is it?
Yeah.
So, we have to come back? Okay, you said, you said June 13th? Okay, you said, you said June thirteenth? Okay, I'll come back.
Continue the hearing.
I'll make the motion to continue the public hearing until June thirteenth.
They have a second?
I'll second it.
All those in favor, Rakesh?
Aye.
Self-choosing, alright.
I so, I assume Lundgren can start working on the uh, licensing portion of it.
Oh, yeah, oh, absolutely.
Okay, appreciate it. Thank you.
Email me.
I will email you everything.
Okay.
Next on the uh. Our list tonight is applicant Kim Lee Horn and Associates requesting site plan approval under section three point two point six point one. Of the Auburn zoning bylaw for self-storage facility. At three nineteen Washington Street, Auburn, Mass. One five oh one. Map forty two parcel thirty one. This has been continued from five twenty five twenty three, so there's no need to open the hearing, it's already open. Is there anyone here from? Kim Lee Horn?
They're on the computer.
On the computer?
Casey, are you there? Casey?
We skipped, can you come back?
Yeah.
Um, do I have to make a motion with that?
No, I'll just.
We're gonna skip ahead to the next one, one of the rest, okay, come online, we'll deal with them then. My next on the list is applicant Eastland Partners Incorporated requesting site plan approval under. Three point two point six point oh, the Auburn zoning bylaw. For a warehouse distribution facility at one ninety Washington Street. Lot one, Auburn, Mass. One five oh one. Map thirty four, parcel four, has been continued from our April twenty fifth meeting. Is there anyone here representing? Eastland Partners?
I'm just, Steve, we're talking about this, we don't even know if the plan is playing on this. The fact that we found you, they have no audio connection. That might be happening with your previous agenda, so yeah, we ask, we're on the YouTube floor, the GoToMe data.
Alright, ask if they can hear you.
Anyone online, hear me?
Yeah, we can hear you now.
Alright, let's go. Back to Kim Lee Horn, Casey, you're, you're, you're up. That's okay, John.
Okay, we're gonna go back to applicant, uh, Kim Lee Horn. Associates.
Great, thank you, um, Adam, are you able to make me a presenter so I can share my screen?
Yes. Alright.
Alright, thank you. Let me know if you want.
We can see that I can see.
Okay, perfect, alright, well, yes, thank you all for um, continuing to hear our application here this evening, um, just wanted to come back and give a. Basically a status update on where we're at with um. Addressing comments um, from the town departments and the. Uh, peer reviewers, so. Um, I'll just go through a few of the changes we've made, um, you know, over the last month or so, so. We, we did go ahead and revise, um. This entrance into a right turn and, in and right turn out only. In order to restrict the movements off of Washington Street. Um, we also did submit our traffic study for review as well. Um, so in regards to site changes, uh, that was the only. Kind of modification we did make. Um, in regards to utilities. Utility plan. Um. We did change our water line design based on comments provided, um, by the water and sewer department, so we now have a. Backflow preventer on our domestic line and um. A fire line going to. Each of these two buildings, we've also implemented um, two hydrants in the locations. Uh. That the um. Fire department and uh, water department requested. And then in regards to the sanitary, um, we have. What we're proposing here is a. Gravity outfall from the building. To this point here, in which we will be installing um, a pump station. And then we will be pumping it up to um, an existing um. Stub to the property that's located within the utility easement, so we'll be converting that cap into. A manhole in that all gravity flows, um. Out to Middlebury Street and. The public system. Um, and then, I think the last thing. Wanted to go over was just the lighting plan, so there's, I think, a request at the last meeting to present on this, so. Um. Here are the, the fixtures that we're planning to use, um, they will be, you know, projecting lights downward. Um, these, these fixtures will be mounted at twenty feet in the height and. Um. So we have a, a couple of pole mounts across the property and they will only be lighting, um. The paved areas and around the building, and we also have wall-mounted lights that will. Be mounted on the building in order to light the, you know, sidewalk and whatnot. In front of the building. Um. And same on the. Other side of the parcel, a couple uh, light poles and then um, wall-mounted lights o- around this building, so we're not. Um. Projecting any, you know, lighting across our property lines or really even close to it, we still have a, a lot of um. Green space and um, lit area kind of surrounding the, the property, so. Um, in regards to. Some peer review comments that we're still working through, uh, that would be stormwater, so we are getting geotech testing done on this. The site and then we will be resubmitting, um, a finalized stormwater. Report and looking through those comments, um. Here with the peer reviewer. Um. So I think those are the main kind of updates here this evening, just wanted to come back and um. Show a little bit of progress and uh, we'll take any additional. Questions or comments that the board might have at this point.
Is there anyone in the audience that has any questions? Rakesh, do you have any questions?
Uh, yes, a few, so. Um, is Casey, right? Ki- Casey, so, so on the. The stormwater management report, so you said that's, that's getting done, um. Is that, is that coming up? Is that uh, coming up in the next um, planning board meeting?
Uh, potentially, what we're waiting on is geotech results, um, so we need to do some infiltration testing. Um, so we're trying to expedite it, but. I don't know if it will be before the next meeting, is that, it's mid uh, June, the next one? Correct?
Yes.
Yeah.
Well, then I, uh, was just. Looking at the uh, the second set of comments, comments from the, I think, from the town, um. There is, um, so we have the um, the utility right-of-way between the two, two lots. Um, have you had conversations with the utility?
Uh, so. We, so this is an easement, um, that was established in order to uh, provide utility access to. Basically both of these parcels, um, so we submitted the EID language for review, um, that basically is, you know, states that we, we do have the rights to. Uh, utilize this e- easement for, you know. Our connections, um, as well as San Tander has the right as well, so. Um, yeah, that, I think we provided that all for. Review and.
Is that the same as um? The national grid, um, right-of-way? Cause there is that transmission lines, right?
Yep, so, let me, let me see if I can highlight here, so this, the utility easement I was discussing, oops. Not highlighting straight at all, um, sorry about that, but that line right there runs across the property, um. The national grid easement bisects the property, so if you can see my cursor, um, here. We, we are also submitting, um, to them to get their approval of just the drive, driveway crossing.
And, and also, I think, given that these are. High voltage equipment, you might need clearance. Yeah, there might be clearance restrictions too, right?
Yes, yep, yep, they're making us include that in the package.
Okay.
No, I just can't hear most of the presentation very well, so.
Um, I have a few questions. My first question is. Why are you building bare block manholes and catch basins? It's in your detail. Instead of using precast?
Um, it's just a typical detail we have been using, but we can switch to precasts.
I don't really care, I was just wondering because I'm on a job in Springfield, you can't get real blocks anymore out there.
Okay.
Where the pies that go underneath. I don't know if Kamasi has them or what, but I was, I was just kind of curious. That's an old state standard.
Okay. Yeah, we can, we'll look into that and, um, revise it.
Um, looking at your drainage.
Mm-hmm.
I have a hard time figuring out what direction the flow is. Because when you go from. One page to the next. Like from, uh. Oh, sheet number is this? Sheet three point four, which shows the drainage. And you go to the max line, you go to the next. Sheet, it comes down to a manhole, takes a right. And then goes. Left out of that manhole goes down, and then the line seems to disappear. At another catch basin where it has the inlet protection. And then, I don't know where it goes from there, and then you have one manhole. Up in the top right corner. Drain manhole that goes out to a, looks like a stone outfall. So I don't know how the drain in the left connects to the drain in the right.
Overall. Um, alright, so. Essentially, in this, you know, drainage design, there is a fair amount of off-site water that's coming onto the property, so. We have a series of uh, bypass pipes, so. One of those is uh, located here and. Picks up uh, flow coming off-site into these two inlets and goes down the site. Into a larger bypass system that then crosses the national grid. Easement and outflows to the wetlands, so it's. You know, continuing the existing drainage pattern down to the wetlands, um. Now, if we go a little bit upstream. Over here, we can see that there's. Another series of a few inlets that are collecting off-site flow from, um. The San Tander bank and routing it through. On, um. The northern side of the property, those are the two series of, um. Pipes that bypass off-site flow through the property. Uh, and then on kind of the southern portion. We do have a different. Inlets located right here and. Right here. That collect off-site flow into these underground detention basins, and those are just. Holding back the flow and then those. That go to the wetland. So all that discussed is just collecting all the off-site flow that's coming onto the site, um. In regards to the flow. Of our development, we have inlets placed throughout the. The parking fields and, um. Those are ultimately piped to this large underground infiltration basin. And, um, before they get into the infiltration basin, they're going through, um, a proprietary stormwater device that will filter it. And provide the water quality. So everything, um, from the onsite impervious pavement areas will be collected and routed to this large underground detention. Um, and infiltration system that ultimately also outflows to the wetlands. Um, so hopefully. That provides a little bit more context to, um. The, the drainage that's happening on site.
Okay, so the. On the. Bottom left of the building on the right. Did I check your area, that's a, a people presence. Looks like a collection system or a recharge system.
Uh, this right here is the infiltration, yeah, recharge system.
So, when you go down to your. Next one down, all the way to the corner of that property, past the second building. The uh, lower, right, there you go. That outfall right there spills out and then it goes into a swale. And that swale, from what I can tell, is gonna wind up on Old Common Road. That flow.
So it all, I mean. Ultimately goes to the wetlands in this corner, we could further define a swale channel to make sure. It doesn't spill onto Old Common, but we, we were trying to avoid impacting within a one hundred feet of the wetland buffer, which is shown in this, um. Gray line here, but, I mean, yeah, we could, we could build. A swale in here, just to.
And the wetland buffer there, that you have there, and you're putting an outfall in it. And it looks like the wetland buffer area goes right up to that outfall. Do you have to replicate any part of that wetland that you're taking away by putting the outfall in the pipe there?
So, the wetlands is here and then the buffer from it is here, so we are not impacting any of the wetland. And we're, you know. Staying with outside of the one hundred foot buffer, so not impacting it at all.
Um, you have a suggestion I would make, and I know you explained the drainage, but if you could put. Uh, directional flow arrows on the pipelines. That would be.
Yeah.
Cause it gets confusing, I'm looking at. I think sometimes thirty inches going to eighteen, actually, no, that's not right.
Yeah, we can add flow arrows.
Find your uh, force main. That's like a twenty. Twenty-eight foot lift for that pump. What size pump is that gonna be, and do you know the house horsepower that's gonna be? As far as the grind the pump goes?
Yeah, let me pull up the details, um. See if we can find. Yeah, and I'm not seeing the horsepower jumping out at me, um, I, I'll get back with our, um. Wastewater engineers to get that, that answer and provide it prior to the next meeting.
Okay, well, your force main exits into the manhole. That's already established. Station two plus seventy eight point three nine. That's an existing manhole, if I'm not mistaken.
So this, um, is an existing cap, it's basically just like stubbed out to the property, so we're going to be converting that. Into a manhole so you can connect to it.
Okay, so there's a pipe line up to that stub end.
Right, yeah, exactly.
So, wh- when I'm looking at the plan here, just. So, wh- when I'm looking at the plan here, it just looks like that force main shoots up into the manhole. Usually they come up and then they taper off like to a 40, so you have a 45 inside the manhole, point at the invert to go in the direction it's supposed to go. Because if you just shoot that up into that manhole, it's just going to sit there and bubble on you. If you know what I mean, because I don't know what the pitch is from that manhole out.
Uh, we can revise that, if you could look at it.
Page C six point three, it really illustrates the lift on that pump. My next question would be, is it one pump or two pumps in the manhole? There you go.
I believe it's just one pump.
Here's, here's my problem. If that pump fails and you have that whole line going up there, that line will back up. I don't know what's going on in the manhole, but it's going to come out somewhere, either inside the building and eventually flow out of the building, across the parking lot into the wetlands. So usually in a grinder pump situation where you're handling buildings this size, it's a double grinder pump. So they alternate, if one goes down, it's a float system in there or a sonic system in there that reads the level, the fluid. One pump will kick on and it's set up with a program, so the element kicks on a second time, it just goes back and forth. So you get even wear in the pump. I would take a look at that with your wastewater engineer.
Okay, yep, we'll take a look. Um, it is a, you know, a relatively large building, but it, I mean, the use, I guess, on the sanitary system should be relatively low. Um, just because there will be limited employees. Um, but yeah, we'll definitely, we'll talk that over with them.
Okay, so say you maintain the one pump and it fails. There'll be an alarm inside the building, I'm sure, or a light on the manhole that tells everybody that it's, it's failed. So is there provision in the job to be able to bypass pump from that manhole all the way up to your discharge manhole? I mean, if, when, when a sewer system goes down, the pump goes down. I don't know about the usage, it may take away, it may take days to fill up that manhole, I don't know. But if it doesn't, that's going to fill up and it's going to be like, you're going to be running around like, uh, chickens with their heads cut off trying to find a pump to get in the hole, pump up to the manhole. That should be all set for, set forth ahead of time, I think.
Okay, yeah, I appreciate the comment.
That's a part of what I, uh...
You made a comment earlier about some off-site water coming onto your site?
Yep.
Where does that come from?
Grading plan.
Does that come from a lot above you, meaning?
Yeah, so, um, the farm located, um, to the east. So you can see all of these gray dash lines or contours. It's, it's, um, basically the property just to the east. Uh, there's a, a large, uh, long hill that flows down, um. So it's, there's a lot, there's a significant amount of drainage kind of coming on, onto the property. And then for the San Tander lot, there's a little bit, um, between, you know, the, the drive aisle that's also flowing down onto the property as well. But yeah, primarily it's the parcel to the east.
Any other? Um, any others have any questions, Duarkash? Go ahead, Dorian.
And it's gone blind too, if anybody has questions.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So you know, I've spoken about, um, traffic concerns on Route 20 from here all the way to South Street. And, um, this is a large lot, large piece of property. I think this is such a good use for this pe- for this piece of property. We have Route 20 being built up everywhere with a lot of traffic. As someone who lives in the area, someone who actually has a storage unit in the area and sees that, um, these places don't have a lot of in and out traffic. You know, people go and they store their things. Um, there, there could be in the morning. Um, I see more and more, um, small businesses like, um, painters, landscapers, et cetera. They use those for their storage, for their equipment, but, um, those are just small bands and stuff. Um, you know, we, we continue to talk about the concerns of the traffic on Route 20 and I think that this is going to have a minimal impact for such a large lot. And, um, you know, to their credit, they, they addressed, um, Mr. Bertrand's concerns up at the farmer's, the farmer's daughter, so you know, they were, they were, they were excellent to, as in a butter to work with. But, um, I'll continue to be here to, to raise my concerns about Route 20 from, you know, the Worcester line to South Street because it is cr- critical, but I think this is a great use for this property and will have a mi- minimal impact with traffic. Thank you.
Kind of a story, thank you. Um, I see you're still, um, determined to have the entrance off of Washington Street. Has Mass DOT given you permission for that curb cut yet?
No, we, so we need to wait until we have, um, site plan approval is my understanding before we can, um, permit it with them, but our traffic engineers have had initial discussions.
Okay, so my question is, what happens if DOT says no?
Uh, DOT said no, um, we would have to figure out another point of access for the site. But based upon our traffic study, uh, we, we don't have any concerns that they would not allow this use. And, um, it's, it's a very, you know, low amount of trips, so it's it, just based on our study, it's, it has not been a concern.
Yeah, as far as getting into that lot with the one big driveway, I think people like it, it should be a right turn only. And people coming in should only be right turn only. You get people crossing Route 20 in a, in the heavy traffic in the, in rush hour, you're going to have an accident there. I know, I know it's not a huge impact, but it's going to happen, I guarantee it.
Yeah, and we took, uh, that feedback from the last meeting and did, um, implement that we will only have right turns in and right turns out.
Okay, appreciate it.
Casey, as, as you, uh, work on the traffic study, you know, um, from a, from a traffic standpoint, also keep the utility, you know, the, uh, the right-of-way access in mind. Because you are, you know, as you get into the property and you go to the left lot, uh, the, the left storage unit, that's, you are passing through the, uh, the 115 right-of-way.
Right.
The transmission right-of-way, so something to work with National Grid on that as well.
Yeah, that, yep, that's a great comment. Um, you can kind of see right here. So they do have an existing gravel path. We're proposing to basically cut our curve and make sure that, you know, their trucks can come in and access and, um, their lines as needed. So, but yeah, definitely appreciate that comment. We'll work through it with them.
If you have nothing else, Casey, you could have a motion to continue to our next hearing?
I'll make a motion to continue the next public hearing on June 13th.
You have a second?
I have a second.
All those in favor, Duarkash?
Aye.
Ron?
Aye.
Myself, John, I mean, uh, see you in two weeks, hopefully.
Thank you all.
Thank you. Uh, next on the list is applicant Eastland Partners Incorporated requesting site plan approval under section three two point two point six point oh of the Auburn zoning bylaw for warehouse distribution facility at 190 Washington Street Lot One, Auburn Mass 01501, map thirty-four, parcel four. This has been continued from our April twenty-fifth meeting. Okay. Um. We did get a, an email from Steve that the owner is willing, um, that the client found acceptable, and I'll read them aloud. A geotechnical consultant shall be retained to design and or certify the one-to-one slope on the western side of the property. That was one of our comments. Uh, no occupancy permits shall be issued until Route 20 improvements are substantially complete. Uh, the four-foot black vinyl coated chain link fence shall be installed around the infiltration basin two and infiltration basin three as illustrated in the approved Auburn Commerce Park definitive subdivision plan. A waiver for foundational landscaping per eleven point five point two is granted. Does anybody have any questions regarding this lot, gentlemen?
John, what about the, uh, the detention points that would have the six foot, the four foot fence?
Can we get the plan?
How many, uh?
Man, one's right next to the actual road, going in, Ron, right there. And there's one more. Trails are way, way out. This is the lot that's way up to the west.
Almost touching, like, by the shelves that you have in there.
Yep.
Okay, I just wanted to make sure they weren't in the vicinity of the mobile home parks where kids could be.
Right, that's why I had the fence going around anyway. Um, is there any comment from anyone in the audience? Mine up there, any?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So I think I just heard good news that they've agreed not, to not have occupancy until the, um, Route, Route 20 improvements are done.
Substantially complete.
That's right, yep, right, right. So, um, that would be my point. Substantially is subjective, so I'd like a little clarification on that. You know, you're substantially and a developer substantially and another member substantially could be different. It's like saying, you know, you'll have reduced homework. Well, does that mean 10 problems or eight problems? So, um, I just, I would like clarification on the substantially. And I'm very, very appreciative that they, they're working with this. Because I could, I, you know, I was anticipating a nightmare during that construction of the road, which we know they're going to have to close lanes and stuff, and then traffic trying to come in and out. I mean, I think, I think it's a great idea to wait until the, uh, the lanes are substantially completed. But if we could just have a clarification.
If I'm wrong, to me substantially completed, the base is down, the binder's down. All you have left is the top and the traffic lines. You have to put temporary traffic lights on the binder. I know sometimes you guys let that sit, but they'd be able to use that with the temporary lines. And then the total completion would be the full pavement. And I'm sure DOT's got to come out and inspect the accident, it has to be right.
It, you know, as long as it's not like, okay, we got one turning lane done, but we're still going to have a lot of construction. I know, so, Sanja, I just, I...
So say Route 20 was the owner. That's an example, just making up.
Okay.
And they're the owner, to me substantially completed, owner has beneficial use. That means the traffic on
Okay.
A beneficial use, getting in and out of there, the way it was, we had talked about.
Yeah, and I, and I do, again, appreciate this. I know that, you know, these meetings have, you know, we've seemed like we're, we're difficult, but it's truly a safety issue for us. We live there. We're already, I mean, this weekend, we'll see everyone getting off of the mass bike, coming Route 20, and it's going to be gridlock. And, um, my recollection is this, um, work will begin in spring of twenty-four. The road work, is that correct? Yeah, spring of twenty-four, so we'll get through this summer at least, but, um...
We're not looking at occupancy until sometime in twenty twenty-four.
Yeah, that would be correct, yeah, in the early summer of twenty twenty-four, so.
Yeah. And I'll just wrap up by saying, I've said all along, I'm not a NIMBY, I know this place is going to be developed. My true concern has always been traffic, safety from the Worcester line all the way down to South Street. So if there are any more projects, I'll be here, but, um, I appreciate them, um, making this concession.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
John wants, wants clarification, so. Sure. Based on the email, um, are they looking to provide the geotech design, slope design? Okay. So they, they will, once they provide us that, we'll send that to RP review and then get some comments?
I don't think we have to be sending it to a peer review, we're with the geotechnical.
Can I ask?
He's got a, the geotech's got a stamp in it.
Yeah, okay.
You have your PE stamp on that, so I'm happy with that. If they, what's that? I don't have my stamp, I don't have a stamp. Um. I can't think of anything else.
Can I ask if anybody online has comments?
Anybody else online have any comments?
Okay, just checking.
Being none, may I have a motion to close the hearing?
I'll make that motion.
May I have a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Myself, was it aye? May I have a motion to approve with these conditions that the owners actually agreed to?
I'll make that motion.
May I have a second?
Okay.
All those in favor, Duarkash?
Aye.
Ron?
Aye.
Myself, John, reason aye, it is a vote. Good luck, gentlemen.
Thank you, Boris, I appreciate it.
Uh, next on the, uh, agenda is applicant Robert Lemansky for GL McKinstry Trust for a definitive subdivision plan for a two-lot, single-family home development with site improvements on the property located at Claire Drive and Lynde Avenue, Auburn Mass 01501. Um, there's no one here representing them and the request has been to continue this to our June twenty-seventh meeting. May I have a motion to move this, uh, review to our June twenty-seventh meeting?
I'll make that motion.
May I have a second?
I'd second it.
All those in favor, Duarkash?
Aye.
Ron?
Aye.
Myself, John, reason aye, it is a vote, is now continued. A discussion, Rochdale Streets solar extension request.
Hmm.
I read that real quick, but... So what kind of an extension are you looking for this time? We, we extended them twice.
Yeah.
Well, we've been extending two different projects.
Right.
Extended one last month, thirteen months ago, this is the other one, same issue.
What was the one last month?
That was Henshaw, that was Henshaw Street.
That was the one up on Henshaw, that they, they own. Then there's the other one that's across from me online.
That's this one.
Right. And that's what's up now? How much, how long do they want?
Uh, I don't know if they're online, um, I think we did a, I think the board did a year for the last one.
We gave them a year the last time.
Yeah, so. That would be my recommendation, just National Street grade seems to be in close on the previous one that you extended multiple ago, so hopefully the same situation with this one.
Yeah, the story is that the resource of National Street, they're spending everything on it.
Yes, yeah.
Which doesn't really surprise me.
Right, but so my question then is, um, can they give us, I mean, we can extend it for a year, but can they give us an update every other month or every month, you know? Just to, because, because, uh, you know, I, I know how these, these studies go and they can, if they're done, they can be done quickly. You know?
So, if we do approve the extension, is there a mechanism we can use that they have to notify everybody when construction is going to start?
They'll have to get building permits.
Again, right?
Okay.
Yeah.
What would they notify you?
Um. We can, we can ask.
How, since the initial approval, how long has it been?
Three or four years, two thousand nineteen maybe, and they had an original two-year approval time.
It was one and back, I mean, two, but then they, those people pulled the life from the silver.
Yeah.
Who took it back, because, yeah, I guess they were, they kept giving extensions and never knowing.
Yeah, so.
Because at the end, some of them get, do get tonight, I believe.
They can't produce enough electricity, yes. Um, so may I have a motion to extend the Rochdale Street solar for one year from the date of its expiration?
Uh, can, can we add a condition that they, they provide updates to the board?
They have to go for a building permit, so I mean, we get that from Caleb, we had to, but I just think it'd be nice if they did give us.
I think Caleb, I think that Rex is looking for.
An update.
Like every six months or three months, every three months?
Yeah, every quarter.
Send us, every quarter, send us something.
Yeah.
And.
Once a quarter, yeah.
So.
Or that, then that, or if not, then the permit gets recent.
Yes.
Oh, no, they have to come for another extension. We, we don't give the permit.
Right. Right.
So the permit starts to come from Caleb. So would to get extended from the point of expiration now for one year based on the fact that we get quarterly updates of the progression or not progression of this project?
I'll make that motion.
May I have a second?
Second.
All those in favor, Dvarkash?
Aye.
Aye.
Myself, John Reed, and I, it is a vote. Uh, there are no modifications. There are no decisions that I know of. There's no business unproceed by me. Is the uh, any update from the member town planner?
Um, the town manager, I interviewed a placement for Todd this morning. Something, I'm ready to go on my activities. And he's signed it, it's one end Friday.
Great.
Um, so you'll have somebody there uh for the third key.
Awesome.
And we're still looking for associate.
Great.
For three years now, since I'm small, using my assistant.
That's a very effective recruitment, that's, that's great. Very effective recruitment from Todd, replacement, yeah.
May I have a motion to approve meeting minutes from 4/11/2023 and submit it?
I'll make that motion.
You have a second?
I'll second it.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Myself, John Reed, and I, it is a vote. May I have a motion to approve meeting minutes from April 18, 2023 meeting?
I'll make that motion.
You have a second?
I'll second it.
All those in favor, Dvarkash?
Aye.
Ron?
Aye.
Myself, John Reed, and I, it is a vote. And may I have a motion to approve meeting minutes from our May 9, 2023 meeting?
I'll make that motion.
You have a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Myself, John Reed, and I, it is a vote. May I have a uh motion to adjourn the meeting?
I would like to. One up, one just note for the next meeting, um, I will be traveling. So I can, I, it'll be, I can jump in online. So if there are any online issues, I'll just ping you and.
Hopefully, I'll be in other countries, so um, somebody else will be supporting for me.
Danielle.
That's probably why I asked you to send a couple of things about this to have a layer.
Okay. Sounds good. When are you both gonna be back? I think uh, I'll, I'll be traveling for the month of June, uh, going back and forth. So any, I, I'll try to attend both online, June 13th and the next one as well.
And I know I fly out tonight because I have my nurse.
Okay.
May I have a motion to adjourn the meeting?
I'll make that motion.
May I have a second?
I'll second it.
All those in favor, Dvarkash?
Aye.
Ron? Myself, John Reed, and I, it is a vote, the meeting is now adjourned.